We're on the air, everyone. So I will call the Lundery Planning Board meeting to order for September 13th, 2023. I just want to point out for our vast audience here that this room has two exits. On the right hand side of the audience, there's the front of the room and the back of the room. If we have to evacuate for any reason, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside, move away from the building, and don't come back in till our fire officials have instructed us to do so. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. We'll pledge allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
That was awkward.
Yeah, I'm not the only one hacking that can start it, so. Okay, let's quick check of attendance here. We have a quorum, and Johnny's here. Bruce is not here. So we got eight voting members. That is more than a quorum, and we can proceed with our meeting. First round of the meeting is administrative board work, which I don't think we have too much. It'll be approval of minutes. There are none. We approved those last week. And Kelly says there's no regional impact determinations. And any discussions with town staff?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to introduce Benjamin Bennett to the board this evening. He's our new town planner.
How are you?
Welcome.
Welcome.
This is his third day.
Well, we'll go easy. No homework assignments yet, but.
Hold on tight.
There's about 15 ordinances we need, you know.
Yeah, welcome. That's awesome.
But, yes.
We're rooting for you.
Thank you.
So upstairs, you're next to Kelly.
Correct.
Very good. Well, welcome. And I look at, I've been here 27 years doing this, and each meeting is still a learning experience, so it's nothing like working in the public sector. And the only thing I have as a reminder for the board is that on the 11th of October at 5:30 PM, we have a non-public session with our town council.
And pizza.
Yeah.
Sorry for the reminder.
Can you get your order in, Tony?
What?
Do you have your order in?
Yes, Kelly's taking care of it for us.
Kelly's, okay. Good. And, okay, I don't have anything else, anything for the board? Nope. We'll move right along. Old business, we have a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan to construct a 58,432 square foot warehouse and storage facility and associated site improvements at 88A Harvey Road, also known as Plainview Drive, tax map 14, lot 17, zone industrial 2, Patriot Holdings LLC is the applicant, and VAB Properties LLC is the owner. This plan had been continued from August 2nd, 2023, and they have a request for continuance to October 13th, 2023.
I think I made an error, Mr. Chairman. I think it's the 11th, actually.
I guess that's when the lawyer's coming.
Yes.
Yep, that was my error.
Yep.
See, 11.
I should have caught that, but I'm just reading merrily alone. So they have requested a continuance to October 11th, 2023. So. So move, Mr. Chairman. Second. Want you to continue. Second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Sign none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And the share votes affirmative. Motion carries. And just one public announcement is that the public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan to construct a 58,432 square foot warehouse and storage facility and associated site improvements, 88A Harvey Road, Plainview Drive, tax map 14, lot 27, zone industrial 2, Patriot Holdings LLC is the applicant, and VAB Properties LLC is the owner, and that this plan is continued to October 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM right here. This is your only public announcement. Next, we have the public hearing on an application for a formal review of a lot line adjustment and consolidation plan to adjust the lot line of tax map 28, lot 29-2, and consolidate with map 17, lot 2, and map 28, lot 31-6, 52 Granger Field Road, tax map 28, lot 29-2, and 104 Granger Field Road, tax map 17, lot 2, zone industrial 2, and Lundery Holdings LLC and Woodhaven Limited Partnership are the owners, and Ken Solinski is the applicant, and they have requested continuance to the 4th of October, 2023. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Want you by Al. Second by Jake. Any discussion? Sign none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And share votes affirmative. Motion carries. So the public hearing on an application for a formal review of a lot line adjustment and consolidation plan to adjust the lot line of tax map 28, lot 29-2, and consolidate with map 17, lot 2, and map 28, lot 31-6, 52 Granger Field Road, tax map 28, lot 29-2, and 104 Granger Field Road, tax map 17, lot 2, zone industrial 2, Lundery Holdings LLC and Woodhaven Limited Partnership are the owners, and Ken Solinski is the applicant. Has been continued to October 4th at 7:00 PM right here, and this is your only official public announcement. Okay. That was easy. Next, we're going to move to, we have no new plans. We'll move to other business, and we have the capital improvement plan workshop tonight. So this is a workshop. It's not a public hearing. Not going to solicit public input unless someone really wants to say something, but we have all the principals here tonight, and I just want to thank the, our CIP committee. Chair is Jake Butler, Vice Chair is Jeff Penta, both from the planning board, Ted Coombs from the town council, Sarah Meyer from the budget committee, and Bob Slater of the school board. And also, have a good input on this, is our staff, Kelly Carron, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Economic Development, Justin Campo, Finance Director for the town, and Lisa McKinney, School Department Member Administrator. So, welcome, everyone. And our CIP committee had a chance. I just want to mention by statute, RSA 674:5, that the planning board is basically responsible for the development of a CIP plan, because it is a planning tool. It's not a financial document, even though there are numbers on there. The intent is to look over six years and to keep the tax rate as level as possible. But it's what the planning board utilizes to determine if, you know, where our rate of growth is and our ability to provide the infrastructure that's needed to sustain that growth. So I will turn it over to Kelly, and you can refer to the committee also. It's like everyone's here, so we'll proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you stated, this process is in accordance with RSA 674:5, as well as section 5.5 of the town charter. And just to recap again what you've highlighted, the CIP committee is tasked with preparing and submitting the capital improvements plan to the planning board for its review. The planning board is the body that finalizes recommendations and adopts the CIP plan, and then forwards it on to the town council and school board for consideration. The CIP is an advisory document that looks out over six years to assist the town in recognizing and resolving deficiency in existing public facilities and anticipate and plan for future demand for capital facilities. The CIP committee met July 25th to review and score, as well as prioritize the submitted projects. And after just that one meeting, the priorities that are up on the screen and on your computers as well were ranked and established by the CIP committee. And I just wanted to note, and the board might recall, that last year we had a discussion about updating the scoring forms. We had several meetings about that. Those forms, again, as the board will recall, were updated and were used in this year's process. So just to briefly go through the spreadsheet I have up before you, the school district submitted four projects. Moose Hill 1A, which is six rooms, was ranked by the committee as priority one. Moose Hill 1B is full-day kindergarten. That was ranked by the committee as priority two, meaning it's necessary to be completed within three years. The third project is high school, which is inclusive of an addition and renovations. That was ranked priority two, again, necessary within a three-year timeframe. And then lastly, from the school is the SAU project, which was ranked priority two within three years. This year, the town did submit a project. Yeah, go ahead.
Lynn has a question. So Kelly, what's the difference between the CIP committee priority assignment and the column labeled placement in the 2024-2029 CIP?
So 2024, 29 is last year's ranking and priorities, and then the CIP committee priority column is this year. And then the last column next to that is, we should include in there the priority and the construction year as well, so we should update that to include that, just as we did in 24 to 29.
Okay, so that first column is what it was last year?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. So the town did submit a project this year. The Department of Public Works submitted a community center project, also known as our Lions Hall, and the committee ranked that as priority one, which is urgent. So with that, we have Mr. Slater here from the school board, we have Ms. McKinney here, we have Dave Wally, our Public Works Director, as well as Justin Campo, our Finance Director, to answer any questions, and myself, of course, to answer any questions that the board may have.
The board have any questions in regards to the community center Lions Hall? To me, there's a lot of unknowns.
A lot of questions.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it could go on and add infinitum, so I think it's a work in progress and really needs to be developed. Probably the only thing is to use it as a placeholder, because we know at some point in the future, we would have to be, you know, doing something with it, something major. But I think a lot of discussion has to go on beforehand to really get down to the nitty gritty of what is needed in there and what's going to be the.
I do have a question on how long to leave it, and maybe Dave has the answer before it would deteriorate.
I think Dave should give.
Much, much more, so.
Dave has a good presentation, I think would be good for him to go over with us before we have any conclusions.
I did the same thing when I checked in.
You set this, Tony? I think overnight, they all slicked down.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Dave Wally, I'm Public Works Director in municipal facilities as well. So yes, you're correct that this is a very fluid situation that we're trying to get as many answers as we can on the fly, and the reason that it's a priority one is because since the kind of vacant facility as of the end of September last year, we've already seen some pretty rapid decay, keeping the, you know, the heat off and the electricity off or only running it, you know, when it's really absolutely necessary to. We've winterized the building, there's no water in it and things of that nature, but again, any facility that sits dormant for a while is going to see some decay, and then one of this age and style of construction, it can certainly rapidly start to deteriorate. We've seen more sagging in the floor in areas that it wasn't once previously to, and other things like, you know, ceiling tiles dropping and rodents start to move in and things of that nature. So, but we are in the conceptual phase. I was actually on the phone today and last week with Weston and Sampson on, we have a very good, what I believe to be a very good layout of the parking lot, creating a new entrance and exit type of pattern and flow through the parking lot, new area out front, creating, to give the ability to change elevations so that we can meet ADA compliance for the building, provide safety exits on and off the property without having a cut through, as it does now, and kind of avoiding the traffic light. The addition to the back, which will certainly make things much easier on construction of HVAC, mechanical, electrical, and things of that nature, will certainly make the project easier to design, and knowing that we're just going to remove all of the existing things in the way that's configured in the current structure. So when we have the marker in there of 1 to 2 million, I really think we're probably, you know, leaning towards the $2 million mark and perhaps a little bit north of that, just because of the amount of site work that we may have to do, and then also if we want to bring water to the facility so that its fire protection is provided as well. They are working currently on the interior layout and design and what that might look like, and trying to get some of the 3D model done as well. So I understand, you know, there's lots of questions, and we're trying to get those answers back to you. I'm hoping that we will, we're having a meeting on Tuesday so that I can see if I can make the agenda for the 25th if we're going to be ready, but I don't want to prematurely bring pieces forward that may not understand how it ties to the overall design and look and feel of the facility. So, but we certainly will be ready to go for the early October meeting to bring that forward, and then look at the project as a whole.
So basically, it, because it's substantial renovations, it has to be right up to today's codes?
Correct.
Building and fire codes, et cetera, and all that stuff like that, so.
That's the lion's share of the work, is making sure that electrical, plumbing, fire, ADA compliance, means of egresses are correct, access to the second floor won't require an elevator per se, but we are implementing a type of lift, a chairlift, if you will, to the second floor.
Has anybody thought about what the purpose of it would be if it was renovated?
So there's lots of ideas. Which ones work and which ones don't, I don't know, but I do believe that the majority of the conversations that I've been privy to is really a community-style center that is quasi the needs of the community, but recreational services, maybe a building upon recreational services. We have a newly created position, the new Assistant Recreation Director that's coming in, started this week. He has lots of ideas, and he's already hit the ground running on building what some of that would look like and what some of those costs may be in offsetting revenues, summer camps, day programs, things of that nature, certainly available conference room space, the hall itself, the pavilion. What will that look like? What types of policies will we need? What kind of fee structure would be implemented? Things like that.
So how, if it's just left the way it is, how long do you think it would be if it's untouched before it wouldn't be salvageable anymore?
I don't have a crystal ball on that answer. How quickly does something decay?
I understand that, right.
But like anything, if you leave it sit, like you can buy a brand-new Harley, put it in a garage, and 10 years later, you think you're going to just jump on it and go for a ride? No. We're talking about a building that is centuries-year-old, and like I said, in the short span of a year, I've already seen things that are of concern. And so the longer or the more that it decays, it will potentially drive the cost to be greater, because you may have to end up addressing things that you weren't going to worry about. So.
Okay, oh, thank you.
I wish I had a better answer than that, but I do think that, because even if it were to go on the ballot in March, which I, as I understand, is the desire, and I know that, you know, they want to know that number, so we're working as quickly as we can to get that number. But I can tell you this, even once it's approved in March, then you've got to go into your actual true design. So, and that can take several months, sometimes almost a year. I don't believe it will take a year for a facility this small, but there's a design phase where you've got to get, and then you get the bid documents, and you've got to put things out. So you're still talking about almost potentially another year before you put a bucket in the ground, or strip something down and start working on it. So my fear is, is if that we move, you know, another whole election cycle, if you will, you know, you're kind of moving, you know, the workload two, three years down the road, and in my opinion, that could be, you know, have a pretty big impact on the facility overall.
Yeah, I think one of the key things is figuring out and letting the public know what a plan is for the use of it.
That has been the question from day one.
Before they'll put the money out.
Understood. And that, but now we sit here today, and we have a new, like I said, we have a new position in town, so I think there's some ideas of other things that could go on there. Like Town Manager Malaguti, you know, illustrated, there's no shortage of desire to have, you know, conference room space, whether it be the library here or even this facility.
Dave, you didn't mention anything about the water issue underneath the building of, you know, importance.
Well, and so I do believe we've come up with a very good solution to that, and that is basically, you know, it's a crawl space under there, and this year with all this rain could be why we're seeing more settling underneath that building, because we are talking about surface water that's causing the problem to make the piers underneath shift and whatnot. That would all be remedied by using a type of product called Flowable Fill. And, you know, flow would be removed, Flowable Fill would be in. They'd use a floating slab-type concrete floor, and then that water's not going to go into an area that it can't get into, because it's solid. Plumbing would be, you know, probably routed through that area, like a typical commercial-type building, with bathrooms being relocated and office space being created.
I just also want to mention that nobody's, nobody's come forward to talk about the history of the building and the importance to the community. It's been a public building since 1769, when it was originally started, and it's been in continuous use until the point when it was moved, actually, up to 1837, the second, first, second Presbyterian Church was built. And then that one was brought down in 1845 from its original place on the corner of Pillsbury and Hardy Road, where Max Apples used to have a farm stand up there. And it was moved, and it was, it became part of a new town hall with the addition of the front section from around the middle of the 1800s. So that building has been a public building. It's our oldest public building in town, and basically, it's been in continuous use by the public. And I say Reverend William Morrison's Meeting House. He was the leader of the community, and they met there for everything. All town meetings were held there in the West Parish. And I think it's of vital importance that the public knows its background. It's just not an old building. It has such historical significance to this town. We'd be remiss to destroy it because you think it's too old, and you can't use it for anything. You can always rehab an old building and bring new uses into play, and that's what the town's trying to do.
Your sentiment is heard loud and clear, Anne. I have stressed that importance, as many other community leaders as well. Yes, certainly, it would be much easier to demo that building and put in a new, modern facility, but I think there's an important part of the luster and learning experience that I think would be incorporated into this project that would be important to the community. It would also potentially be a lot more money than we would want to spend to create this kind of facility and usefulness for this space. Some of the things that we've been talking about in the early stages, and we're not quite there yet, Anne, so don't get too excited.
Oh, no, no, no.
But, you know, in the front, we, in order for the ADA compliance, we do have to kind of have a meandering ramp to meet the grades and the slopes that we need, but it'll go through kind of a nice, well-lit and also landscape kind of area. And we've been talking about learning stations, maybe potentially reflection areas along the way that have placards and things like that. There's lots of things that we're talking about when we get into the interior design about, we learned a lot on our field trip, and I really liked some of the things that they had there that, you know, that.
The First Parish Church in East Terry, which was built the same year, starting the same year, 1769.
Yep. And so especially if we're going to incorporate types of programs into that building, like maybe the summer programs or other things of that nature, that if the next generations are going to be there, they can use it as a learning place to be at. We've talked about how great that would be, because you have the common across the street, so the kids could learn from the war memorial. They could learn about the Kent Allen Forest and take nature walks. They could learn about the cemetery. They could go into the apple orchids. You know, and creating a connectivity from that up to what I call the town campus up here is something that I'm, you know, envisioning, working on, talking to people, being, actually being a better listener than a talker. I usually get a little long-winded, I apologize, but I do like to listen, and I've learned a great deal from you. I just mentioned the doors today that you have stored away, and those things will come into a final design that I think, again, and I said this at the previous meetings that we spoke of the facility, that I think this would be a real fine facility to continue to serve the community of Lundery, as it has done, like you've illustrated for hundreds of years.
But there are other groups that want to use it, theater troops, the art program.
There's a wide variety of groups that could be put to use.
So many groups that can be using that facility.
Don't disagree.
I think you really have to demonstrate the value of it. That's what's going to, you know, celebrate.
Well, I like to leave myself on the side of, I'll build what is wanted and desired in design. The usefulness, the promotion of what are we doing there, I'm kind of going to yield to some guidance from town leadership, town manager, perhaps, you know, recreation, you know, if we're going to take on different things to do with recreation with the new position. So, but I obviously will be there, you know, trying to bring the message forward too as well. It's hard to have concrete answers that, yes, we'll have, you know, conference rooms available for, you know, rent or use from these dates, these times, but a multi-use type of community center is what I believe is kind of what is being sought out.
I have one last thing I want to say. The name Lions Hall is a misnomer, because they never owned the building. They just used it, and so many people used it before, Reverend Morrison's Meeting House, and that old town hall. It was a public building. People need to realize that.
I heard you mention that. We've had discussions about that. I just, it's hard for me to reference it than anything that it's been for the last 50 years, and they had their sign out front, and so if I refer to the, no disrespect, but if I refer to it as the Reverend Morrison Meeting House, people are, most people in town are not going to know where I'm referring to.
There's a sign on the property to the left of the building.
I know, I know that. Tucked off to the side. I get it. I understand. But I would like to incorporate, to your point, though, I would like to bring back the importance of that, and I think, you know, similarly to what we do in the town hall, there's a lot of, you know, history and whatnot that's, you know, right when you're walking into this own facility. I think a lot of that stuff, Anne, can be encapsulated into this center, so.
I hope so.
Jeff, yeah, coming from a, you know, definitely a kind of a similar town that has historic buildings and celebrated those historic buildings, you know, there's, I don't think anyone on this board or in the community argues the 300-year history that was built in that town. What I'm looking out for is kind of the next 300 years and the safety of that building right now, and, you know, what other important discussions and, you know, concepts for the future of Lundery can be had within that community center concept. So, you know, I definitely, yeah, we have to celebrate that, because it's a central point in our, you know, in our town, in our town history, but also kind of with planning for the next 300 years on what we can do there. So that's why, you know, sitting on the CIP committee, it was, you know, I looked at that as a, what can we, we have to get, we have to have some type of solution now, and I thought that your presentation you made was very compelling, and obviously, you work very, you're working very closely and hearing all of us in the community, but I would definitely, you know, want to definitely employ that. We have 300 future years to think about, Anne, I think.
Yeah, I think, I hear you. And again, I know it's a challenge for all to kind of envision this, and that's why we are working very diligently to bring forward these conceptuals, because I think once you see that, you'll get a sense for what the space will look like, what it'll feel like, not permanently. It will, we're going to give it kind of that, you know, kind of vision that can then be critiqued and say, well, wow, you know, if we're going to have the kitchen at the back of the property with the service window into the hall rather than at the front. into the hall rather than at the front and the side service window so that if there are outdoor things being done at the pavilion and accessible bathrooms from the outside, you start to think about what the potential could be. And myself and Shearston Hildegren and the new Assistant Rec. Director Doug Hall had a meeting there today for an hour, just spitballing things about that. And because they both wanted to see the space and understand the size and the complexity of it, we talked about everything from, like I said, different summer camp programs, reading programs paired up with the library with Aaron Matlin, the way that the kids and things could go to driver's ed school. Again, the list goes on and on. And I'm not saying this is what we're doing. We're just saying, we don't want to spend $1 million to $2 million on a building with not even any thought in our head on what we're doing with it. But we now have a staff member and we have the ability to manage it.
Or spend the money and no one uses it.
And create the space. Correct.
So Dave, the history lesson is really nice. About how many square feet would that, when you think you're done with the renovations, about how much usable square footage is in there?
Well, the usable square footage will pretty much stay the same.
What is that?
That's a great question. Somebody asked me that earlier today and I believe it was about 2,800 square feet. But just don't quote me on that.
Yeah. My head said about $3,000. So is it fair to say that for $2 million probably-ish, you're thinking you're going to have a usable building?
So the reason why too, the square footage is a little bit difficult is because we are right now doing the layout, if you will, figuring out the square footage we would need that we want to add on to the back. Because we see the kitchen and bathrooms and a couple, so the usable is going to change.
Get sidetracked.
I do think...
Are you going to have a usable building with about $2 million? 2.2, whatever?
I think we're north of two with what we're talking about. And again, it can be more if we want to make it more glamorous. But I think when that $1 million to $2 million, that was based upon the assessment of the building and we had three options. We only do a couple of things and it's like $500,000 to $600,000. We just do replace all mechanical.
So when all is said and done, the warrant might be 2.5.
I believe we're more in the $2 to $3 million, yes.
Whatever.
Yeah. Because of the site work and things.
But is it fair to say that for that much square footage?
Yes.
You couldn't build a brand-new building?
Not for that square footage, no. You'd be more at the $5 to $6 million range.
So can we then say that it's a good value to the taxpayers to get that much square footage of usable space for X amount of, for that much money?
I agree. Because if we were looking at a ballot to say, look, we want to spend $5 to $6 million for a community center, you'd have to have an awful lot of conversation about that.
So then my comment to you is, history's only going to get you so many votes.
Yes.
Okay? The touchy-feely part of the building is only going to get you so many votes. The value to the community in dollars and cents is probably going to get you quite a few votes. So you've got to sell it, market it, whatever, with the value part of it to the community as well. So that's where I'm at. I just looked at the square footage just off the top of my head and said, this could be a great value to the community to get this much square footage for this much money. Because if you raise that building and try to put up something new, you're in the $5 to $6 to $7 million. So this is a good value, a good use of the taxpayers' money and have a usable building in the center of town for whatever you decide that it's going to be.
Correct. The useful purpose-ness of the building was much different than from where we are now from a year ago today. So I think we're much closer to having a...
It's going to change a year from now, probably.
And I think as it gets to become more reality, if it becomes more of a reality, I think even more things will be envisioned for what could be done there.
What has changed? Is it who's going to be using it?
Well, again...
It seems like you're leaning more towards a kids' facility.
No.
I don't think we're there yet.
No. I just think that there's more things and more ideas that could be done there.
Okay, because I'm sure the adults wouldn't mind using it.
Oh, yeah. No, this is not...
You know, because the kids do have the schools in town. Matthew Thornton's right down the street and all that.
No. A multi-use type of facility for all generations to learn, be educated, everything from the history to having fun there, to embracing it at Old Homes Day.
Art, history, culture, everything.
All kinds of things. Environmental, especially with the things across the street and whatnot. We talked about the nature trails and the learning stations they have out there. It can be a multitude of things that I think would be excellent for the town of Lunedary and really embrace the history of it and things that were important to us. The apple orchards, the environment, things of that nature. So conservation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And people should view that video that came from, what is it, June or July? You were sitting at the table there. I'm not sure if it was a town council meeting or a CIP meeting.
Oh, yeah. There was both. There was CIP meeting in July and then back.
It was very informative as far as what you were planned on doing with the building itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess my first question is, what's driving the number-one priority to be assigned to that project?
I think because of the age of the facility. I think that, again, I kind of talked about that a little bit ago, that if we don't hit this election cycle to then wait another whole year and then the type of ramping up to get out there and get going on the project, you're kind of putting us out about 18 months to 24 months before we get working on it. That is a bit of a concern for me.
Dave, you had also mentioned at the CIP meeting, you were concerned about the structurability of the building, that it very well could fall down with how the walls are and with the flooring. You were very worried about the structure at the time, right?
Again, because if the structure begins to decay or we don't really get that water underneath that building taken care of, then yeah, it could erode to a point where it starts causing other problems that we once didn't have. So the sooner we get in there and get addressing that, then, and so the blowback to that is, well, why don't you go in there and do it? Well, do I want to invest $100,000 for that one aspect of the building and then we decide to do nothing with it? Or we, you know, I just don't want to run in there and kind of cherry pick little things because I'm trying to look at this as a total project, the totality of the situation.
Because I guess I have problems with the number-one priority because really it's not being used at this point in time. So I don't know if it's a threat to health and safety of any particular people. I understand that it's a threat to the health and safety of the building itself, but one of the big problems I have is I just don't see a plan for it. And I'm not sure where to go with that. And I also want to make sure that any dollar value we're talking about makes it accessible to every citizen of Lunedary as well.
It's been, one of the principal drivers of the project is to make sure that it is ADA compliant. There's nothing, no part of that building that is ADA compliant. So that's a big component of it. And then safety, again, due to the age, because if we start using it more, which is the hope, that it meets all the fire regulations and whatnot, because a structure like that can go up real fast. So I think it needs to be sprinkled. So we want to make sure that all of the safety and ADA stuff is addressed and that's one of the principal drivers of the project.
And the way you have the plan laid out, is it making sure the building is going to be good for 10 years, 20 years down the road? We're not going to be coming back asking for more money because there was some deficiency that we didn't address?
I agree. Selfishly, I should be asking us to just knock the building down and give me a brand-new facility that I don't have to worry about the maintenance and whatnot. But all buildings require maintenance, whether if they're 5, 10, 50, or 500 years old, they all require maintenance. And so, yes, there could be things that, and the trickiness of this one is, there can be a lot of contingencies that happen, that you get into a wall and you don't realize that there were other issues there, terminites are found, whatnot. I mean, there's only so much you can find when you're doing your little...
Oh, absolutely.
...cut into the walls and things. So things can be found that drive project costs. So the contingency line's probably going to be probably a little bit more than what you would typically anticipate in a new construction, certainly in a new construction.
Because my main concern, I have a couple of concerns. One is, like I said, I don't know if we have a definitive plan for how we're going to use the building. But also that the $2 million price tag that we have down here, I just don't know if we have any real teeth behind what that means. And already we're waffling a little bit, 2, 2.5. We don't know what we're going to find. So I just, I have some concerns that the price tag's going to keep growing and growing and growing.
We're working very fast.
I'm sorry, Ann, too, but I don't have a whole lot of attachment to that building. I've been in town a long time. I don't have a lot of attachment to the building. I don't think it's particularly a good-looking building either. So if there was another option, I would be willing to hear that as well.
You know, I understand that. What I'm trying not to do is rush and give you a number like a million dollars and then when we get done things, and even, the one thing that our consultants are struggling with, because like you guys, they're asking those questions, well, what type, what's your intended use? What's your intended use? Because do we want to put in four stalls in the bathroom or do we only need three? So there's those types of questions and those affect the dollars. So we're doing the best we can to give them the guidance that they need. I really think that once we get to the conceptual, it's brought out into the open and we hear what everybody's criticisms are or not, perhaps we have a little bit more of a definitive use on what we envision. We can certainly put something together on that, working with the leadership of the town. And then from that, our consultants should be able to derive a number that's fairly close to where we need to be. We have to have a number for the ballot. So they're going to be very cautious on what that number is due to the age of the building. The one thing that makes it a little bit easier is by doing the addition on the back. That's easy. They know square footages, they know mechanical, it's all in there. And then it's just a matter of plumbing it into the building. So that does help them get good numbers. It's the unknowns of what's inside and then how illustrious do we want to make it look? You know, your finishes and stuff like that, you can get carried away with. But we'll work within the budget that we feel is comfortable that the taxpayers will approve.
So let me ask you the big question. If this goes to Warren Article next year and gets disapproved, what do you do?
It sits vacant and we do the best to keep it standing. We don't, I don't even have a maintenance budget for it right now. When I, I don't even have the grass cut weekly. I wait until I see that it's kind of getting a little bit long and I make a phone call and say, give it a cut. You know, when Old Homes Day comes, we cut it a couple of times for the needy parents. The electricity has been in addition to the budget that we don't have money for. We don't have water, but we keep the heat off as long as we possibly can until we got to turn it on. We have not had the air conditioning on in that building at all. So a lot of rain, moisture sets in.
Get that, yeah.
That's bad for the building.
It is. It's not good, but I can't, I can't run the air conditioning at 70 degrees for a building that's vacant.
Yep. But with the school coming in for a lot of projects, a lot of big projects, and we'll see where this goes in March. But if it doesn't get approved, then what happens? Because we can't go back and revisit it for a year at least.
Correct. But perhaps what we could do is do the design so that there's a firm, definitive design. Designs cost money, though, and I'd hate to spend $100,000 to $150,000 doing a design on a building that we don't believe will ever get approved. It's a lot of money down the drain to do a complete design.
No, and I get that, but I guess it's kind of a money well spent ahead so you know what you're getting to.
Yeah. We've done a lot of work in a short period of time.
It's a double-edged sword.
I mean, this wasn't on the radar at all. I mean, a year ago, they moved out and that happened real quick.
Yeah, this has popped up quickly. I mean, I look at it the way Lynn does, the five projects on here, three are priority one. And I think what should be done is at least a ranking. What of those three priority ones do we need the most? And I think that's how we get to take a look at it. Because if we all go on our warrants with all these three building projects, none of them are going to pass. They'll go down. And the school and the town have always alternated back and forth. And the town hasn't had any projects for probably at least three, four years.
There was, as I understand, I believe, Justin, 2019, the taxpayer relief was signed. And so you're correct. And I think if the floor hadn't sagged and the Lions had moved out, we probably wouldn't be sitting here right now. But it's something that's come up and it's important. And I understand there's competing interests. Certainly the schools are always a priority for a community. And this is kind of, I understand how some can view it as a nice-to-be, but I think it would also be a shame if we don't move expeditiously towards saving this building before our decision is made for us. And it gets to the point where, you know, the renovations has exceeded the value to the community like Tony was driving at, that now we've got some larger challenges and deficiencies within the building and now the costs have come up to $3.5 million, $4.5 million, and now people are like, we got to let it go. And it'd be a shame to see that happen.
Johnny? Yeah. Is there a Plan B? It's like, so you don't get this approved? And I think I heard you say that the water underneath the building may be causing it to be structurally not sound.
Just to be clear, there's no structural deficiencies right now, but the water getting under there is causing problems with some of the piers that support the floor. But the physical envelope of the building is structurally sound.
And I also heard some concerns that there isn't really an intended use yet and we're working on that. I mean, is it a different, would there be a Plan B approach to say, let's make it so that it's not going to cause future, you know, like the building doesn't become structurally unsound and now you have to tear it all down? But is there some like, almost like a mothballing-type procedure or Plan B that you could address those things so that you can also work towards developing an overall plan or strategy for the building? More concrete, I guess?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. I just, I struggle with people being warm to the idea of pouring money into a building that we're not using at all. And could we? Sure, yeah. We could go in and certainly address the floor situation, you know, and tackle that aspect of it. But slowing decay on a building, there's really no mechanism in place for that.
Yeah. And then what happens if, in the process of getting this all approved and getting ramped up to do it, what happens if something does happen to it? Like it burns to the ground or...
Well, that's an easy one there, it burns. But we do have expendable maintenance trust fund. It's a town facility. I mean, if there was a portion of the roof that caved in or, you know, somebody broke a door or whatever or something to that extent, or the furnace, God, I don't even want to say it because furnaces are expensive, but if, you know, we can't not have heat in the building. If we did that, it would be, forget it, the building will go quick. We have to provide some level of comfort to the building. But if those things, mechanical things went, then we have expendable maintenance trust fund that we could draw from. But we don't have the general operating budget money is what I'm saying. And we're not, you know, something that we're going to have to talk about with this budget cycle to make sure that we have some money in there for energy or outside maintenance or whatnot. The plowing is, we're not plowing it. I go in myself personally and if it starts to get up to a depth, then I plow it out just because I want to make sure that, God forbid, a fire does start, that the fire department has at least the ability to get in. You know, we want to make sure that it's still accessible for that purpose. So, but other than that, we don't have any general operating budget money.
I just think it's important to point out, we're mentioning the fire with it. Justin Kepo, Finance Director. The building is insured by our Primex, so we would have that as well, should the building burn down or something like that. It is part of the town's insurance policy.
Thank you. Jake, I'll go down.
You know, I think a lot of the reason we put this out of one, and I understand and can see where people are saying, no, we do not have all the information on it right now. But what we do know is we essentially have a condemned municipal facility. You can't go in it. That's an issue. It is a public safety issue. Nobody can even go in it. We realize we don't have all the data we need for an actual true cost on this, but if we wait next year, we have the potential to, the floor has fallen in or the, you know, once the... the floor has fallen in or the, you know, once the floor falls in, then we're gonna start talking about structural issues, cause now the floor is falling. So the amount of potential for something to go wrong inside of the building is kind of what has warranted us to put it at that level one. You know, the, the committee score and the department scores were a little bit different. Uh, we were two points higher. One of them, uh, was on the addresses in emergency, public safety or school safety need. Like I said, we essentially have a condemned public building, so there is a legitimate public safety issue there. Um, and the other one was, um, uh, results in long-term cost savings. We know, you know, just look at the district office from, from a year ago, how much has that gone up? What, what are we planning on, that spending on the district office now that the town has waited a year on building a facility we need? What's that difference in just one year?
But you got interest rates that have doubled and then you've got the cost of about a half a million to this point, so.
So in three hundred sixty.
Two million.
Three hundred sixty-five days, the price of the same exact project went up one point two million dollars. So we know we have a legitimate issue here. We know something needs to be addressed with it. Yes, we do not have all the information. But it is certainly at a point in its lifespan where we know we need to do something with it. And I think that was a lot of the reason why we put this as a priority one. You know, and again, I agree, we don't have, we don't have all the concrete evidence. Dave's working very hard to get that, or concrete pricing or an idea of, of what it's truly gonna cost us. But, you know, if we put it as a level two and two years from now, the floor did fall in. And now, again, if the floor falls in now, the structure's gonna wanna start to buckle. Now, we're looking at, instead of a two million dollar renovation, we're looking at tearing it down and putting up a five million dollar building, you know? So I think that, that was a lot of the reason behind that, that priority one.
Even if, realistically, if it gets to that point, then it's a different conversation. Do we keep it or not? Is it green space? Right now, I think the town is, it seems like the town wants to keep it for some use. And of course, we don't have the plans. I'm, um, Dave, from what you've kind of been summarizing and saying, it seems like you have a plan for, to get to the plans?
Yes, I, uh, once the conceptuals are done, um, and from what we did with the assessment of the building, I believe at that point, we can, the, the engineers can give us a much rounder number as to where we need to be to put it on the ballot in March. And especially knowing rates right now, um, you know, I think I, I learned a little bit by just observing what the school district went through too. And I, I know when they initially were talking about their project, they, they rolled a number out. And then when they really started to visualize the space, that number grew. And then the market started going crazy and then COVID hit and then the market changed. And there, you know, there's, and, and it's still extremely difficult in the commercial side of things right now to know, uh, things. So in some ways, it's good that we're, we're running out of time, but at the same time, when we, when we make that, that, that dollar number known, we know we're gonna be close to where we need to be, you know, by six months from now when they vote on it. If we're gonna wait eighteen months to people to vote on it.
It's like you're starting all over.
It's almost like whatever numbers we come up with and within the next three to four months, they're no good for eighteen months from now on a ballot box. We're gonna have to go and revisit it all again. So I, I think they can, they can derive, um, pretty accurately where we're so close to, you know, the ballot in March that we're gonna know, uh, more closely what we need. Um, and again, we won't have a finished design. That'll all be part of the project to do the finished design once approved. So once the money is, I get ahead of myself, if the money is approved, uh, in March, you know, then they go into the design phase and survey and, and they really start getting into some intrusive tearing apart walls and looking at things so that they can really incorporate that into the final design. That's when we really get into talking about the fixtures and things like that. But we already know the layout, we already know the square footage, we already know where the mechanicals are gonna go. So it's just a, it, it'll go pretty quick.
Yeah, and I mean, obviously you're talking about the ballot, but also the upcoming budget season, I'm sure you'll, you'll have
Correct.
that information for the appropriate boards.
Yes.
Or for.
Like I said, I, we're, we're really pressing to be at the next, uh, town council meeting for a presentation. Um, there's a lot of different, um, disciplines within their architects in their field that are working on this. Everything from landscaping to mechanical to structural, uh, the, the gambit. So, um, they're, they're working as diligently as they can. We're gonna have a meeting on Tuesday so that I can see if I can make the agenda or not, if we're gonna be ready. I don't wanna roll something out premature and then, you know, um, we get, we get blowback and it, we get derailed. So if I think it's of our best interest to wait until the October second meeting, I think is, it would be the one after that, I believe, then that's what we'll do. So information's coming. I know it's not what you wanna hear at this, this meeting tonight. Again, you know, CIP, you know, kinda this whole kinda came up out of nowhere within less than a year, so.
I've got a question for Justin. I think it's a pretty important one. Uh, even at my age, sometimes I, I think of something. It is, but.
Twice this year.
My question for you is if we do nothing with that building and it collapses or poses a, a threat because it deteriorates, how likely is it that Primex is going to cover the demolition and disposal of that, or will the town have to eat that?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that answer. Uh, my, my thought would be the actual demolition and all that, we would have to cover. However, they would be, uh, issuing us an insurance payment for the building, which would go towards taking care of the demolition and things like that.
Is there any, is there any expectation on their part that we have to maintain our property to be covered?
Uh, it's the same with any insurance. Um, you can't necessarily go out and set it on fire yourself. You can't be negligent to the point of fault with it.
I think maybe what he's looking at is, you know, does the building have a potential to get to a point where Primex will just say, we're not gonna insure it?
It, it, it does have that, but at this point, I don't think we're, we're that close to it. If things start falling apart and we do nothing and we knowingly do nothing, I could see Primex stepping in and saying no.
I think to address your concerns, Al, in other words, the town certainly has not boarded up the windows, locked the door and we've walked away. Okay, we, we, we're not doing that, okay? We do usually at least a weekly walkthrough, if not every other week. You know, we're in it a little bit more now, obviously, because, you know, we're, we're designing it, so we're having meetings out there and, and, and having discussions and things. So, uh, we cut the grass when we can, we keep the park in a lot to make sure that the fire department can get in there. So, uh, we're not, in my mind, being negligent with the building. If it, if it falls in, it falls in, you know, it's been raining thirty inches of rain and, you know, the building couldn't take it. I don't think that's something that, I, I, you know, I'll, I'll defer to the, the professional in our insurance carry, but I don't think that's something that they would say you've been, you know, grossly negligent in the, in the, not doing anything.
No, that.
I would agree with that. I mean, if we were to go and all of a sudden say, you know what, we're not paying the electric, we're not paying the heating, we're not doing all this, because we don't have it budgeted, then I think they would have more of a case, but we're doing all that. We're doing the walkthroughs like Dave's saying.
We're talking about structural more than anything, you know? If, if there's structural defects that, that get worse and worse and worse over time and we do nothing about it, there's a serious problem.
Again, in our evaluation of the building, we do not have any structural deficiencies within the building.
I'm just hypothetical.
I know, I get it, yep.
Okay.
Snow loaded, snow is a, you know, sixty inches of snow. I don't know. But I will tell you this, and Ann can, you know, that, that building is built really strong. I mean, the, the roof and the morsel joints and everything is extremely impressive.
Oh, they knew, they knew how to build things.
They certainly did.
Timbers are.
They're, they're built to last.
It's, it's exciting stuff. Though I, 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 you know, being, you know, former carpenter and, and framer, I, I can appreciate the value in, in that work. It's impressive.
Good to know.
I have.
Let's see, Roger.
I, uh, I have some experience with rehabbing old buildings from the south end of Boston. Two things that are critical is a good, solid, clean basement and a good roof. If you were to pick a building that had a bad roof, you're gonna look at probably twice what it costs, cause it leaks down through. And it's the same with coming up. So if you're gonna rehab that building, are you gonna put a basement in it? Or you're gonna put, was that a slab you're talking about?
Yeah, no, we would not do any kind of excavation there. We're, we're, we're considering a slab in the, in, in the interior portion of the, of the building.
There is no, uh, foundation under that.
Uh, it's a com- it's a combination of materials through, through the years, um, everything.
I've been under there.
Yeah.
And I dug down next to one of them for whatever reason. It's just rocks put in a hole.
In, on, under the floor and, and whatnot, yes, yes. And that's, and it, it holds the piers and so when the water comes through, that's, yeah.
But it, but there's no cement or, there's essentially.
That would all come out and then be replaced, you know?
Again, that's, the, the other question that I would have is, I was involved with the companies that make money on old buildings, is if you're looking at square footage and you're gonna have to do something in the basement, why aren't we putting a basement in there? I mean, you're gonna do a slab or something and you're gonna have to put some sort of foundation to hold up the sides.
Yeah, uh, again, there, we're not looking to do any excavation underneath the structure itself. But on the, uh, back end of the property where the addition would go, uh, even that, we're not considering a, a basement. Um, it's, it's not, um, the attic space, uh, we're talking about potentially using for location of some mechanical equipment too. And in other, other, other portions of it would be at the back, so, um, you know, your typical type of com- commercial construction.
Was it Roger?
I, I'm just.
You're computing.
Not gonna have. I, I don't see where you're gonna have conference rooms and stuff in there unless the hall is gone. And that's part of the thing.
Well, there's two large rooms upstairs, uh, so one would be a larger conference room and one would be a smaller conference room that could be of use.
I've been in those. Questionable. That, that's a tough stairway getting up there.
Well, the, the stairwell will be addressed and there'll be the HVA, the, the, the air conditioning unit, the awkwardness of that and that bathroom will be removed so that we can accommodate the rise and the run. And also that would be where the lift would be, um, installed for, to go upstairs. The side, um, uh, other egress of stairs would also have to be reconfigured as well for the rise and the run. So we might have to come out a, a little bit. We've looked at that. Um, so I understand that. And the bathrooms with the kitchen going away and going to the back, then we can do the, the, all the bathrooms that we need and then potentially even a second office, so.
Okay.
So those, tho- those things will be coming out within the next few weeks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Ted.
I have no real questions. Um, I mean, besides the fact that, you know, we, one of the biggest driving factors is that time is money and we've seen time and time again, the town delay pushing a project down the line or the voters pushing down a project down the line. And the next year or two years out, it, um, you know, you're adding a big multiplying factor onto the cost when we actually get to doing the project. And then all of a sudden, when people decide that, oh, let's do it, you know, later on, you're being very penny wise pound foolish. And now the project that we actually now voted and approved on is a lot more money than originally when it could have cost us way less money if we did it upfront. And so I just see, we have, uh, you know, multiple projects that we're looking at, or even just looking at a single project. If we push it down the line, you know, it could all of a sudden be next year, it could be three million. And if we push it down the line again, and if weather affects the building even further or other effects to it, maybe we're looking at five or six million.
I, I'll say this, Ted, I, I'd like to just put on my resident taxpayer hat for a moment. I, I've been in town now for twenty-four years. And I will say that I'm thoroughly impressed with the town's ability to lay out, uh, a, a, a prudent CIP structure. And in the time I've been here, we, you know, I'll tell you what you all already know, we rebuilt all the firehouses, a new police station in this facility. Uh, the town did, uh, yeoman's work in getting all of that done. And, and, and that's, uh, an extremely good accomplishment. And then I think it, it, in two thousand nineteen, the town council recognized that, you know, the school has their own challenges. And some of the school things were, along the way, South School was, uh, renovated and added on to when my kids arrived. And there's been other, other extreme, uh, you know, large cost improvements to the high school and whatnot along the way. And so, um, but the council recognized that and said, hey, all our facilities are done and we're gonna do a taxpayer relief, uh, act that they did. And they haven't. And they haven't, you know, talked about any other municipal facilities until this come along. And I do kind of view it as a little bit of an emergency that we need to act swiftly and quickly before we lose or further jeopardize losing what I consider to be a big charm for the town. It's in the heart of our town, it's in our common, it's got immense history as Ann has illustrated quite, uh, nicely. And, uh, and then the, the fondness of it and the camaraderie and the, and the friendships and the, and the great relationships that have been bonded there through Christmas tree sales and, you know, the concerts on the common and the Old Homes Day and whatnot. I, I think, um, that the community would, would, would weep if we were to lose this structure.
I agree.
Or, or, or the cost drives it beyond to Tony's very good point, that this is a great value for the cost that we're kinda looking at right now. But if we start to exceed that and push the dollar amount to three to four to five, personally, again, I'm speaking as a resident, I think kindergarten trumps that as sad as I, 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 I would say, that there are other important community needs that this would probably be pushed off the chart. And that's just my resident hat, so.
Certainly.
Okay, does the board have any inclination to change the, uh, priority on this?
I had one more question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Okay, um, did you ever consider, um, asking for the public's view of what the building could be used for?
I know early on, Ann, you know, there, there was a discussion about, you know, doing a survey monkey or something to that effect and, and, and I, I can appreciate that. But perhaps you've taken note that we've had a lot of change in staff and a lot of new positions in the last year. Town manager Malaguti has been, um, you know, bringing on his team and, and, and forming that across the town. You know, we've had a lot of change and so, um, you know, it's, it's one of those things that just hasn't been done. But again, I've been, I've been listening, town manager's been listening, town councils have been listening. I know there was a meeting, uh, the other night or something like that too, um, for, for people to come and speak and voice. And, you know, my phone is, is always on and we're all willing to listen. I, I haven't heard, uh, anything outside of what we've already discussed here tonight, but perhaps there is that we've overlooked.
Last night, there was a meeting at the library on this topic. And, um, our, our town council chair was there and he gave his, you know, views and he made some comments. But he also said there should be, um, something about having the public speak. And, um, I haven't seen that yet, but we have some people who were at the meeting last night here. And if you take a minute or two and listen to what they have to say, you know, and what they brought up at that meeting, just, just listen, you don't have to.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, every town council meeting has a public comment session. I, you know, I, if people have things, come forward and let's hear it, yep.
Can we hear a couple of things?
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yes.
You asked for the, um, the board's recommendation for, for.
Priority.
But isn't that premature? Don't we do that after the public hearing on the fourth?
No, we have to have something to present to the, for the public, for the public hearing. Public hearing is next, uh, two weeks, October fourth, uh, for this. But, uh.
But don't we have the opportunity?
Workshop, we have our discussion and then, uh, you know, any, any, any changes. Yeah, any changes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, so the purpose of tonight is to have this exact discussion that you're going through.
Yep.
If you wanted to propose a change in the priorities, you can do so tonight. They would remain proposed changes. At the public hearing, you can, you will finalize those changes.
Yeah.
With additional input from the public, um, with regard to the priority. And then any, any other adjustments that the board feels is necessary.
So public comment is next week?
So the public hearing.
On the fourth.
Uh, the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for October fourth, provided that the planning board is, is satisfied with this work session tonight. Again, through the process, we try and have this document well-prepared and adopted prior to budget season. So that's kind of the, the tight timeframe, if you will. Um, the goal, so yes, ten, ten-four is the.
So this is a work session between the board and town staff?
It is, but Tom Chalit Thagel said last night that he spoke to Art Rugg and that's why these people showed up and that he would allow people to speak.
So just a point of order briefly, it's at the discretion of the chairman if he wants to allow public comment this evening. I've not heard from the chairman. I've not heard from the chairman yet, so I'll defer to him.
Yeah, see if I get a word in edgewise here. I think I will take very brief public input at the conclusion of, of this, so we'll hear all the projects first before we go for any public input, and I emphasize be brief, because if it, uh, is a long dissertation, that is not, that's for public hearing. And there's usually a time limit on public hearing, I wish you can talk.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question?
That, that, uh, no, that was, save it till later, save it till later.
I just wanna understand if, if after you vote on these numbers, right, at the public hearing, can the numbers be changed or the verbiage be changed at all? Or is it etched in stone? It's just a clarification question.
Yes, they can be changed.
The numbers can be changed and the.
The priority numbers?
Public hearing.
Are you referring to the priority numbers?
Yes, I'm trying to understand, so tonight they're gonna vote on.
There's no vote happening this evening.
Okay, but they're gonna, to put them in the numbers.
They're going to discuss how they may or may not want to change the priority numbers.
Okay, and they, they can or cannot change the verbiage of it?
What do you mean the verbiage?
Like, um, the numbers and, um.
Mr. Chair, she's gonna keep talking, should you come up to the microphone?
Uh, not, not, no.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to discuss offline.
Not at this point, 'cause I think the school has to have time to, to do their presentation.
Well, I just know what the chair said last night, so.
Yes, I, I said I would allow very minimal public input, and that would be at the conclusion of, uh, our listing to all the projects.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that.
So, the, what, any, anything on priorities, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it intact until here, and see what the people say then. I haven't heard anything otherwise from the board. So I, I, just, uh, my last comment is, I, I fully believe we should go ahead with an engineering study to understand what the total cost would be. And without it, that in hand, I can't see making it a number one priority, but I would recommend making it a number two, but, uh, that's just my opinion. Okay. Anyone else that would like to make it a number two? I don't see any.
So, so in some aspect, thank you, Mr. Chair, so in some aspect, and I've been beating my head against the wall on this whole priority thing anyway, because I, I think it's, it's, um, it's cumbersome at best, um, Jeff just said misleading, I would agree with that. Um, but if you, if you look at the strict definition of what it says here, the Lyons Hall, the Lyons Hall project is really the only one of these projects that meets the number one priority, um, status. If you look at the verbiage. However, I would argue that the verbiage is, is, um, problematic, because if you just look at what it says, cannot be delayed, needed immediately for health and safety, then there will never be a school project that can be a number one. And, and that's a problem, and I've been saying it for a bunch of years, ever since I presented to this board and to the town council, um, several projects, so, um, I, I don't know what to say.
Was the form changed after we had this discussion last year on verbiage?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yes, there's agreement, uh, between, you know, staff and our staff at the school board, which this board says was fine, and this board voted on.
But it still doesn't meet the needs of the school district, so the school district then should have a different template, because, because there is no way that, that, uh, unless a school is falling down and a kid falls through, through the, the floor in phase one, it's not health or safety. It's needed for curriculum needs, for the betterment of the students, but it's not health and safety.
What does the form actually say?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Says public safety or school safety. I see what Tony's saying.
Yes, it's, it's a difference.
Which we did change, it never said anything to school prior to.
Yeah, that was, there was a change.
But I agree. But on page seven, it doesn't say that. When you look at the definition of, of this on page seven.
We changed this forum criteria, but we did not change the priority votes.
So that's certainly something we can, we can discuss. I would recommend after we get through this process, but I'm certainly open to.
Yeah, and, and we really can't change what we have there now for, for this year. It would be anything, any changes would be next year, which we did last year, we made the changes.
Right, so, so from, from my standpoint, the CIP, the CIP meeting is over, and this is a planning board meeting. What I'm looking at is on page seven, the priority system and the definitions, if, if I'm gonna follow this exactly, the Lyons Hall project is, is the only one that can be voted on. Because Moose Hill is not health and safety, either, either one of those projects. A high school.
It could be school safety.
The SAU project, definitely not.
Tony, I think you'd have to have them present on the school items to know if they're health and safety before making that determination. I think the school district would.
I think we need to.
I agree.
Listen to all the projects first, and then we can make, make decisions, so. So we'll, we'll, we'll move, move along, uh, otherwise we'll be here all night. The next four items are all for the school district. Thank you, Dave, and, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll be doing this in a few weeks again, so.
Absolutely.
You have the floor, Bob. Uh, Bob Slater, Chair of the, uh, School Board, and also a member of the CACIP Committee.
Yep.
And, uh, and Lisa McKenny, so.
Where do you like to begin?
At the beginning.
Well, actually, the first question I have without, I'm just looking at this here, is Moose Hill one A, six rooms, and Moose Hill one B, full day kindergarten. Uh, and are they interchangeable, or are they totally separate, or?
They're separate. Um, we separated those projects, um, because at the time we were, we were uncertain as to what the school board would wanna move forward for a project. So we separated them in case the school board decides to just go forward with the addition and not propose full day K. So at that time, um, with the uncertainty of, um, the desire of the board and the community, we, we kept them separate on the CIP plan. The Moose Hill is, um, over capacity right now. Um, we have therapy and office spaces being combined, which pushes our students out into the hallways for instruction. Um, our friends program, which is the autistic program at Moose Hill, um, they require individual spaces, those students need individual spaces, and right now they're combined. We just do not have the space to accommodate, um, the learning environment that they should have. We have two portables classrooms for kindergarten, um, and we are housing our library in book bins. Um, so Moose Hill is severely, um, overcrowded at the moment, and we do need some space there, so I think we know that that is priority one. But we also know that Moose Hill going to full day K is, um, something we have in discussions. Um, we're one of the few school districts in the state that do not offer full day K. Um, we firmly believe that it's important to the education of the students and their futures to have this extra instruction, and we believe that it will, um, add to the success of the students long term, so the discussions of whether that will be added in or not is, is all being done.
That's still, uh, unknown then, whether there'll be full-time kindergarten or not.
It, it will be determined whether we propose it, um, there's building committees right now, um, that, that will propose it, um, whether we move it forward in the budget process or not.
Just to, to go off of what Lisa said, um, you know, we are seeing a slight decline in enrollment this year of approximately fifty students. But the main reason for space is because of our programs. When we went through the building tours, um, and we're, we're doing a survey to try to find out where those children went, I know there's a program in town that started a full day program. So maybe some went there, so we're in the process of trying to find out, and with enrollment, so we're in the process of doing a survey through a company that handles this type of situation. But the space needs are due to our programs, um, as what Lisa said, and classroom space with the portables. The portables run us approximately forty-five thousand a year, um, lease, uh, renewable every two years, uh, they're not on a purchase program. Um, so that's where two classrooms are in our library or teacher's room. Um, then there's meeting space, um, but mainly it's for our, our programs. Um, we have children that are being, um, you know, taken care of in the hallways due to rooms and that, with these programs, they have, they've really, you know, the enrollment and those needs have increased tremendously over the last five, six, seven years. So the expansion part to the left side and to the back of the building will take care of those programs and give us the, I believe, three regular classrooms, so we can remove the portables and get that off the docket. Uh, full day kindergarten would be the one, um, one B, which would be another wing off of the right, uh, in the back, um, to, to house full day kindergarten. So we are, we have put together a building committee, um, five, uh, community members in the trades business, construction management to work, um, they just did a tour of the buildings, um, a week ago, and they're meeting with, uh, the architect and Trident Group and vetting the process and how they got to where they're at. And then they're gonna come back and meet with them, with their committee, and then we, um, give the board what they, how they feel on October third. Uh, the board wants to hear from that committee and take all this information in as well, and, and the superintendent's hoping to have that survey done of, you know, where these children are and, and where, where the enrollment's gonna go over the next five years, and then we can make a, an educated decision. Um, I'm only one of five board members, and the presentation, the kindergarten committee that started a year and a half ago on full day, presented some, some really good facts on the education and what, what a student will get with a full day program compared to a half day. And I think that value will help us tremendously, uh, through the early years of, uh, one through three, one through fourth grade, um, with all the information we've received, and as what Lisa said, um, we're only one of, uh, five towns, there's only five towns in the state of New Hampshire without full day kindergarten. Um, us and Gothstown are in the same spot because we have no space. Um, not sure of the other reasons on the other, um, three towns, but that's how we got to this point, Mr. Chairman and, and, um, Planning Board. We will have some more decisions to make as a school board, uh, after we get the presentation from the building committee that we put together to work with the kindergarten committee, and, um, and then make a decision at that point what, what should move forward or not, so.
So the six, the six rooms are the key eventually, if the town chose to do it, to have, you know, full day kindergarten?
One A, Al, is off the back of the building, very back of the building.
Yeah.
That would go in first as one A, that would be able, then we would be, be able to move the, get rid of the portables.
Right.
Because we have to put those students in that section, it opens up some, some, um, uh, some other areas of working with our programs as well as, as the students, and then the expansion to the left where the portables were, the new vestibule for safety, um, in the front of the building, in the left where the portables are, would be, um, part of the, they call it Moose Hill one B, full day, it's actually one A, one B, that have been grouped together. Um, and then one B has been separated, so that, that would come at a later phase, approximately eight months after that phase is done, that would start once the kids are moved into that building. Full day would go off of the addition in the back.
So you would be building more rooms with one B?
Yes. Yes, that would be only a full day kindergarten moves forward, Al.
Okay, uh, big question I remember from last year, uh, you have pretty favorable bond situation, correct?
Yes, 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 um, we had our, the high school bond dropped off last year, um, currently, I can get that, hold on one second. Next year, in fiscal year twenty-six, we have, um, the bond come off, which for the renovation project, we did. We, all bonds will be off in fiscal year twenty-nine, so, um, in twenty-six, we'll only have two, and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we just have one, which was the South School refunding. So we're in a very good position debt-wise, um, as these debts continue to drop off. Um, like I said, um, the high school dropped off last year, and the next one to drop off is the renovations, leaving us only two.
So just for clar- just for clarification, sorry, Al, so just for clarification, when you say drop off, for the common people out there, the mortgage would have been paid off.
Correct.
On several of those projects.
Final payment, correct.
Okay, and those final payments are not the interest that was paid upfront, so.
We pay interest.
No, no, I'm saying that was front-loaded with the interest. I heard something of like two hundred thousand a year or something like that. Uh, how much are you paying a year on those bonds?
Um, currently, for, for the current fiscal year, it's at nine hundred and thirty-five thousand for the principal payment, and the interest payment is seventy-one thousand for the current year, and then as the years go on and they drop off or get paid off, those numbers come down.
Okay, thank you.
Ian?
I have a question. When was the last time it went to a vote to the public on whether to have full day kindergarten, and what was the result?
It hasn't.
I don't think we've ever had a vote go to the public.
I don't think it has.
Nope.
It didn't?
No.
Nope.
No.
Nope.
I thought it did a couple of years back.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
And it didn't go to vote in two thousand, right, when Moose Hill, or I, my, dates might be kind of mixed up, but when Moose Hill was originally built, that was originally built with the intent of just a half-day kindergarten.
That's correct.
With potential future expansion at that point in time for information that we knew.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, so, I, you know, the, the, the community has, has been beating up the school district for years about, um, test scores. And, um, the rest of the state of New Hampshire, uh, more than ninety-nine percent has decided that full day kindergarten is, is, is the way to go, and the way to mitigate that from an educational standpoint. Uh, Lenanderry's way behind, uh, the kids start first grade behind. Um, the, the kindergarten committee, uh, showed compelling evidence, um, that, that full day kindergarten needs to happen. Um, the question is, are the, are the taxpayers gonna support it or not? Um, you know, and that's, and that's where, that's where we're at. Um, I mean, I would, I would easily make this a priority one, uh, but, um, that, that's, that's where I sit.
Okay, Jeff?
Um, I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
So, uh, let me say, I think a, a robust school system is the cornerstone of our community, without a doubt, and, uh, I think these two projects, uh, you know, Moose Hill specifically that we're talking about right now are, are warranted, very, very much needed, and I think will drive Lenanderry to educational excellence, and I think it's important. Okay, thank you. You all set, Alan?
Yep.
Jake?
Mr. Chair, I'm all set.
Okay, Roger?
I have a comment to make, if that's okay.
Sure, certainly.
Why, he asked you.
I've been a substitute teacher in every school. I worked four years in the South School. I actually was a sub at Moose Hill. My wife can, works there at Moose Hill just about, I think about four years now. And it is my opinion, after seeing a lot of results there, for example, a young girl who couldn't walk or talk at the beginning of the year was running down the corridor shouting at me. I think that's reason enough to spend at least double what we're spending now, because they get visible results. And kids that start off good do better throughout life, even if they're marginal or they have some issues, they're gonna be much better later on. That's my opinion, and that's how I'll vote.
Okay, Roger, Ted?
So I guess I'm wearing, I guess, two hats here, or three hats, uh, as, also on the building committee for the kindergarten. How updated are these numbers that we're being presented with right now that's in the packet?
How updated are these numbers that we're being presented with right now that's in the packet?
Those numbers that we put on that CIP plan were really strictly square foot numbers. Since then, we have hired, um, some estimating firms to put some real numbers on, which will be presented. Is it at the next, at October?
No, they just did, we just had them read.
With the numbers?
Yep.
With the updated numbers?
Yep.
Is that with the 16, 8, 7, 1, 281?
Yes.
282?
That's correct.
And was there any discussion with them about potential cost savings if we just call it one project? And time savings?
I, I think it was, it was estimated as the project moving forward together, so whether it be.
Because right now, as I see it, they're two separate projects and they're five years apart.
Right.
And five years later, that, uh, $12,331,700 could be quite a bit more than $12 million five years later.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I bring it up that the cost savings of wrapping it all into one project now, and as well the time savings and as well a lack of confusing the voters. Because voters may say, didn't I already vote on this? And we wouldn't want to confuse voters and not have them vote again to actually make it full time by bringing it forth to them again. That's my big worry.
And there's been many discussions about what is the best way to bring this forward so we aren't confusing the voters. And I think that the board and the community will decide what they want to bring forward, what's going to be the least confusing. And, and we totally agree that any projects that are kicked down the road, I mean, we've seen it, they're just going to cost more. The problems aren't going to go away. I don't see London Dairy getting smaller. And it's just going to end up costing more. So kicking the can down the road is, is really not what we should be thinking of at this time.
And you had made a notion that these two numbers were as a combined project, but really they can't be viewed as a combined project because they're five years apart. Was this question proposed to them of doing it as one project?
I believe that the numbers are up to 2025, Ted, is what Trident Group brought us back. So that gives us time to do, if one was, if they were to go ahead, it would give us time to get into both projects. Once one's completed, then go into the next by 2025.
It has to be phased out too, so they can do one, one phase of it and then move the students over there. And then the next year, do another phase of it because we need to keep, you know, education going. So it's not like we can just close down kindergarten.
No, I wouldn't want to be closing it down, but certainly the full time part of it with the whole new addition.
It's a long time project.
That wouldn't be affecting the rest of the building though, by building that whole other addition.
If the full day K part?
Yeah, that wouldn't be affecting the rest of the school.
And, and that's something we probably look at if, if it does go forward and gets approved, is how we can expedite it. Because again, to your point, that'll save costs. The longer it's stretched out, the more it's going to cost. We don't know what interest rates are going to do on bonds. We've seen in the last two years, they've doubled from where we were on, on one of our other projects that's on here as well. You know, and, and the value of the education, you know, you have to take in, you know, the longer we stretch it out, the longer we're not getting that and the services to our programs, which a lot of people don't. It was kind of nice because when we brought the budget committee through, through, through the tours, they didn't understand the kindergarten 20 years ago doesn't operate like the kindergarten today because of the programs and the specials that are offered to children, to your point, Roger, um, of what they do. It's, it's really fascinating to see what goes on in the kindergarten today, uh, with all the programs out there. So, um, people really have to take a look at it compared to 20, 25 years ago. So to your point, the project to the right would have to go later because the building out back has to get established. That wing goes off of that hall, new corridor for full day. So this would go in, phase two would start with the expansion of the, the special rooms and some meeting rooms and a few more bathrooms, um, NPR room where they can do a lot of physical therapy, not in the hallways. And then the wing out back would go, once that unit, as soon as that unit was started, they would probably start if full day was approved, so.
Right, I, I guess my big driving point home is the dollar value on full day, is that them saying that's what it will cost five years from now? Or what it would cost if we approved it for next year?
For next year.
For next year, right.
This is good till 25, this estimate.
Okay.
This is all assuming that this would go on the ballot in March and then construction would be probably two years out from there.
So I guess in my sense, as I look at this, it should all be, just be one, one, one project, one item on the ballot so that people don't vote or even get confused on the ballot.
Right.
And it should just be one item and it should be the two numbers combined. And that way, all the money is available when they need to go and pull the money. Yes, it's in a way concurrent project, you have to do one section and the next section. But you'd hate to have to go back to the voters again and get the rest of that money.
Right.
And then either not have them approve it or you're waiting five years down the line and it's all another year, 18 months after that, that, that money's going to be available for them to go to construction.
I, I guess what we asked as a board was to do the due diligence of the space needs only and then full day.
Right.
We have, the, the kindergarten committee to, to, the hard work they did over the last 16, 18 months have brought a lot of information on why it's needed. So we laid it out in a cost aspect to the taxpayers that if this is, if, if we could get these, it'll get us by. But we were really looking at what full day kindergarten does for our school district and our students moving forward. So what the board wants to do is talk to the building committee, get their input, uh, after doing the visits, meeting with the Trident Group, meeting with the architects, meeting with the kindergarten committee and give, give us their recommendation on the 3rd of October.
Right, and as I said, I'm only one member of that board, but I look at things of a, a big global, uh, global organizational system where you've got to take all the different parts and pieces and you've got to really look at what's going to happen in the future and what makes the most sense now to make sure that what we want to have as the final product actually happen. And, I mean, I would hate to have only one be approved and have never had the second one be approved.
Yep.
So, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, Johnny?
I don't have any comments.
Oh, okay.
All right, I have a couple more just housekeeping questions, um, so I can understand this better. The price of $45,000 for a rental, is that for each unit or both units per year?
Both.
Both units, oh, okay. And as far as the school, we talked kindergarten, do you have younger children also in the kindergarten? In Moose Hill kindergarten, like three years old for the LEAP program and four and five? So we're not really just talking about kindergarten?
Correct, it's LEAP as well. That services the three to five year olds.
Okay, do we have like a preschool for four year olds as part of the kindergarten program?
The preschool program.
Okay, we do.
Yes.
Okay, and do we take any, any children from other towns?
Into the preschool?
Into the three, four and five year old levels?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's all London Dairy.
I just wanted to make that clear because I wasn't really sure, thank you.
Yeah, one more question, uh, for Lisa. I've always been told that, uh, your bond rate depends on the dollar value. So the higher dollar value that you're bonding, you get a better rate, is that generally true?
Yes.
That get back, that gets back to what Ted was talking about, about combining those two.
Better rates, sure.
It might make sense to do that and get a lower bond rate.
That's a good point, yes.
Well, and then the other part of that is, is that it was brought up that when we go to full day kindergarten, we will actually get more funding from the state. Is that correct?
Correct, we would get more money in adequacy.
So that really offset a lot of our, or at least part of our costs.
Operational, it'll knock that down.
I just have a follow up question on that, I apologize, Mr. Chair. Is the intent to kind of obviously list them separately? I think the, um, at least in my head, one of the key points is the board hasn't endorsed full day kindergarten or not. So if the board does go ahead and endorses, um, for potentially, you would probably combine those?
It would.
Potentially, yes.
Because we need the space.
I think we needed all the information so the board and the committee can make some decisions, given all the facts. They can move forward with good information. Because i- if we were to just have lumped this all together, the question would have been, how much additional is full day K costing us? So, so we definitely needed this information to share it and then decisions will be made, you know, with that information moving forward.
I think that makes good sense also from what Ted said, that voters see two projects, they go and vote for one, not vote for the other. But if they, you know, it's one, I think it's probably more of an inclination to, to vote for it because it's a, you know, school improvement. Okay, uh, any inkling to change priorities or, I should say?
I do have one comment real quick. Our spreadsheet has, full day is a two, but on our packet, it actually has a, has a one. So I just want to have a clarification.
That's a typo on my part.
Okay.
I've noticed a number of typos.
Okay.
So this is a draft, just transparency.
Just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
But yes, I welcome any other amendments in terms of grammar or other museum.
Okay, we'll move along to the, uh, high school.
So moving on to the high school, I think, you know, back a few years ago, when we had the Trident Group do our facility study, they went through all our facilities and, and prioritized projects. And the high school definitely stood out as the building needing, um, with a very old section in phase one, needing some major renovations. There's a wood foundation, I don't know if anybody's walked through phase one, if you've done any of the building tours, if you walked down that hall.
I've been underneath phase one. Last year, Bob took us on a tour.
Yeah.
Sahara Desert.
Oh, down below, yeah. So it, it's very squishy, it's old, um, it really needs some updating. We also have, um, some facilities and, and all these details will be worked out through building committees and, um, auditoriums. The gymnasium at the time, um, was never completed, it was downsized to save money. I think it's really time we bring our high school up to par with our neighboring communities. So we, we put that as a priority one, I believe it ended up, right, is that Kelly? A two?
Two.
Oh, two. Because of the safety concerns. The safety concerns, that wood foundation, that wood, um, foundation in phase one is a health concern or a fire hazard. So I think being a priority two, we really feel that it is, um, not as, as critical as Moose Hill would be, but it, it definitely should be the next project we need to consider doing something out. Oh, and I also wanted to add, there's potential some building aid that we could get because of the safety concerns in phase one. Building aid, um, is ranked by different criteria and one of them is safety. So it's potential we could get some building aid money when, when the time for that project came. We could certainly apply for it and see if we could get, get any money from the state for it, so. Do you have anything to add for high school?
Yeah, it's, um, to Lisa's point, this is a, a ways off, even with the safety concerns, there's so much involved. This is a, one of our biggest buildings and as, as most people know, or I would say a lot of people in this room, London Dairy never built a high school. That was a middle school and got turned into the high school once the middle school got built. So phase one, um, you know, is, is, was the original middle school built on piers. It's, uh, all sand underneath, um, wood foundation, um, basically a modular frame, wooden walls, interior. So safety concerns are there with today's day and age, um, in, in school buildings. We've, we've spent a lot of money in our, uh, security over the last several years. And thank you to the, to the taxpayers for, you know, funding a lot of these projects on door locks and alert systems and that, and Alice training in our buildings. But the, uh, the older part of this building prevents us from even adding on to the building or doing anything due to that wood structure. So we could not add on to that building unless that building was, uh, either removed and rebuilt and brought up to current standards. It's not on a foundation, so it basically is at its term, you know, in, in the next several years. Maybe five to 10 years, you could get out of that. But the safety concerns are there for the high school. But it's going to take a lot of research, a lot of committee work on just what we need with the enrollment numbers. Again, that's a, a deciding factor, every year it changes, but we want to make sure we have, uh, the, the quality space for the education at the high school with all the cost, cost loads that we offer. And potential new, new, uh, courses that we're going to offer in the, in the next several years. And that, so we, we feel as though this is, you know, we still got another project to come up after this one that's been lingering for several years as well. But this is going to need a full building committee to go through our master plan. You know, we have renderings already on our master plan that we presented to you folks a couple of years ago. That's subject to change, you know, after every year or every two years, um, once they get into it. And, um, so we figure there's probably several years of planning before it comes here, you know, two to three years, while we take care of Moose Hill and hopefully, you know, something with the SAU office. And meanwhile, this will be, have its work going on. The kindergarten's just coming up on two years of work to get to a full day program. So that'll tell you the time it takes to get through this and that and getting committees built and then a building committee. We like to have the education committee do their work first and then implement the building committee with people that are in the trades. The district hasn't done it that way and now we do. We're doing it, you know, so we're getting more people involved. We, we're looking at, you know, the right aspect, putting the right people in the right committees that can ask the right questions and do the due diligence on behalf of the school district, the taxpayers and our, uh, project management team and, and hold them, you know, accountable too and not try to bring more to the plate. So that's the reason for the building committee so early. I think it's, it's going to do the taxpayers a lot of justice. I, I want to thank everyone that volunteers their time, whether on the town side or school side. I think it's ver, it's, there's a, you can't put a value on it, um, and that. So I think by the time we get to this point, you know, at the high school or bond, you're, you're probably, you know, well over three years from now, even, you know, coming here. So it is a concern, but I think we can work through with what we've got and keep it operational and try to take care of this full day, um, possibility and possibly solve the SAU problem as we only have, uh, just under four years left on the lease up there, so.
And I think it's important to, to note too is, um, last year with our HVAC infrastructure bond, we were able to take care of some of, we will be able to take care of some of the mechanical, more pressing mechanical issues at the schools. And the high school is one of them is, that is, um, slotted to get a new boiler. So that should buy us some time, um, to, to kind of really vet out what this project would look like, um, moving forward. So like, like Bob said, it, it would be a few years down the road, but, um, bridging that gap with the mechanicals is, is really helpful. So that was really good that we got that bond last year.
I remember when that was built and it was the first time I ever saw a sprinkler system designed to spray upward just to protect the, the wood floor. And at that time, it had a, a water tank that was pressurized because we didn't have public water. Never seen anything like it since.
Yeah, yeah.
Really unique.
It was unique.
And, and just, just to note too on this, you know, we know the costs are going up, but we can only do so many things and we want to do it right, like we're trying to do with every project, um, vetting it to its 10th degree and making sure it's needed in the size and, and planning for the future of London Dairy School District. So, thank you.
So the board content with priority two for the high school? And we'll move on to the, uh, school district, uh, SAU project, which is, it offices.
So the SAU office, um, we are currently, as, as I'm sure you are all aware, leasing space up in North London Dairy at Kitty Hawk. We just completed our fifth year, we're in our sixth year right now of a 10-year lease. So I think moving forward or thinking ahead, it really would be prudent to be thinking that the district office or the town should build the SAU, um, a building so we no longer need to lease. It has long-term investment, you'd own the real estate, you wouldn't be at the, um, I want to say the mercy, but, um, at the whim of a landlord who could potentially do, raise rent or, um, or decide to sell the building. So I think it's, it's, it's important to get the district office, um, built. You know, I know, was it the year before last this went on the ballot? It almost passed, it had a lot of support, um, didn't quite make it, but I, the need has not gone. It almost passed, it had a lot of support, didn't quite make it, but the need has not gone away. I think the priority might have changed with Moose Hill, trying to get Moose Hill through. But this, we feel, should come after Moose Hill and get that done so we can get out of that lease moving forward.
And the board has not really discussed this as we've been fully engaged in the school and the education part, because that's number one, you know, buildings can be built at any time. For office space, it's unfortunate it didn't pass a year and a half ago, where it was only increasing about $7 on a $500,000 home. As you can see, we've upped the cost about $500,000 from when it was proposed a year and a half ago. I stated earlier when a question was asked, interest rates have doubled. So, this project overall cost is up about 1.1 million from a year and a half ago. So, we've got to look at, and going through our master plan, building use, we do not own a piece of property that we can put it on at this time. The perfect spot is right here at Town Hall where we proposed. And that, I think the board will probably have a discussion this fall, whether we, you know, want to reach out to the town and see if it's still available in the near future and see if it's worth coming back sooner than later. As we know, costs, as we've talked about all tonight, continue to increase. Interest rates are leveled off right now, but are talking of going up again. And that, but we, you know, we can definitely look at the building layout, we can look at sizing to maybe offset some of those costs, doing some different things. But it hasn't really been a topic of the school board due to the magnitude of education things. And as you know, we've gone through a lot of leadership changes and a lot of good things are happening on the education front, and we've been focused really hard on that. So, I feel as though this is probably ranked, it's as a two. We've got four years left, but if it goes on next year's ballot, we'll be down to three. If it doesn't pass, we're down to two. And to Lisa's point, the landlord could sell that building tomorrow and they could give us a year to get out because they need the building. We just don't know, we don't have a crystal ball. That's the nerve-wracking part in the back of our head is, you know, what if? So, we want to get on top of this sooner than later, but education is number one. We're in a position where we still have a few years to work through this. So, my hope is, you know, once we get the kindergarten situated on which direction we're going to go, we have a discussion, board level, on whether we talk to the town and try to reserve some space here for another year or two and see if we can put it together and make it work for the community. I think it's the most, the best financial and fiscally responsible spot to put it. Parking is here, drainage is here, infrastructure's here. We'd have to go purchase a piece of property to put a building of 6,000 to 8,000 square feet up on and then do the infrastructure on top of the building cost. Basically, here is just building cost, if 5.2 million, it's only about a half a million dollars in site work. If we had to go buy a piece of property and do parking lots and drainage and utilities and sewer hookup on top of, you know, 4.7 million, I'm not going to even say the number because everybody can kind of picture it. So, I think here is a great spot, it finishes the complex here. It works good because it's close to four schools, walking distance. But I, the board has got to discuss that and then have a conversation with the town and make sure it's still available and they're willing to work with us to put it here. That's my opinion as one board member, but we'll get to that this fall.
Okay, Tony, any?
No, I actually do have a question. Do you have options to renew on your lease?
Not at this time.
Okay.
So, just really building off of what I've talked about a lot tonight, and this project is a prime example with where their numbers were before and where they are now, is a 26% increase from last year to this year. And if we keep, like I've been saying, keep kicking our projects down the road, 26% increase year after year after year, all of a sudden, all these projects that we've been delaying doing or putting off will be costing the town a lot more money. And it's just, as a taxpayer in town, I would hate to see a drastic increase because we kicked projects down the road.
Roger.
I have two questions.
Joe.
In the building that we proposed, talking about now, how many people work in that?
Twenty-four.
I think it's twenty-four.
Twenty-three or twenty-four.
So, you have another 20 or 25 cars here.
Yeah, it's about what they had here when they tore it down, believe it or not. Yeah, I think it's changed by one or two people.
I came here today and there were no parking spaces, everything was full. I thought something big was going.
The whole gets busy, so.
But then the other question I have is, don't we own land behind the school that goes back quite a ways, they've been filling it in for years?
Yeah, it's all, they've gone as far as it can go, Roger, it's all wetlands, the rest of it.
Oh, so they can't continue to fill it in?
Going to the bordering neighbors out behind, yep.
So, well, that was, and of course, the Lions Club may go down, so there's a spot.
I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go near that. But we did look at all our property during the master plan.
Yes.
Over two years that we put together and came to that, that, you know, that there's just not a spot to put it, so.
There's a spot, Roger, the land is very, very, very expensive to build on, it's just, it's cost prohibitive.
It was years ago, I know, they talked about trying to locate, it was before the middle school. You know, really, it is very wet out there, so it's not really, you know, practical for a building.
If you can get the permits.
Correct.
I'm good, sir.
Think it should have been passed before.
It was close.
I'm good.
Just a quick comment, and I just want to thank you for actually including the community in these building committees and educational committees, I think it's an incredible asset, it definitely shows in the work, you know, kind of being invited here. You know, as you look ahead of your long-term school math and facilities plan, definitely a lot of opportunity there. You know, to echo the comments of kicking the can down the other road, I think we can't kick it down anymore.
They've been kicked.
It's dented quite much, but thanks for, but thank you for the leadership in including the community and those discussions and the expertise that the collective community can bring to that.
Thank you.
Bob mentioned it kind of got glossed over, he said it quickly, but let's be clear, I'll say it for him again. Londonderry has never built a high school. It's a great trivia question, if you want to win some money or some beer or whatever at the bar. Londonderry Junior Senior High School opened in the last week of August of 1978. But it was a middle school that, and over the years, it's been cobbled together and added on to, or whatever. But to his point, Londonderry has never built a high school.
Yep, that is one of the Londonderry trivia facts. Ian.
I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. Is there a penalty if you move out early from the current building you're using?
No, they just need notice.
Okay. Now, you talked about this Town Hall property, possibly building there. I remember that the town asked for you to add on a couple of rooms for the, you know, town.
Yep.
Use, and you said no to that?
No, we said no.
That's not true.
Or is it still in the?
It was then.
In the mix?
Yeah, and we haven't talked about it since, but it was, they were going to have a couple of office spaces, yep.
Okay, so that's still a possibility to, you know, increase.
It's basically been put on the shelf since.
Okay. Have you considered putting the, if the Town Hall property isn't available, the kindergarten property, space in front of the kindergarten? You know, that might be a possibility.
Yeah, we've looked, we've looked at all the usable land there, and there is a tract of land, I believe, to the left of the entrance that would take, what I was told, years of court to find out if it could be used or not on the school side or town side.
Years of what?
Going to court and trying to find out on deed, I think it was, Kelly? Because I did look into that with the town manager. But it's something with the deed rights and that, and it would take some time and some cost to find out. And then I don't even know if it would fit what we need. There is a chunk of property there. What we did here is.
It's where the pollinator garden is and.
Yes.
Next to the school and all the way down to Pillsbury.
That's correct. Yeah, it's pretty narrow, so I'm not sure that you could get it in. But once I heard we'd have to go to Superior Court to try to get some sort of deed work done and that, it was kind of, you know, talking with the town manager, it was, it didn't seem feasible at that time, so.
Okay, was it a matter if you had the, we have a conservation rights to it or if we own the land?
I asked for the opinion and the square footage, I don't think is there any ways for parking. The kindergarten's a very busy road in and out. And what we heard from a lot of people is they didn't really want district office near the schools.
Really?
Because you get a lot of traffic in and out, you know, meetings and personnel just because of the safety of the children.
Okay.
And I think the thought was, is that being here really, we were here at one time, and I do think that people still believe that this is an optimum spot for the district office in the town complex.
I thought if it wasn't an option.
With the, when it was priced out, it was to go two stories. So, having two stories would give us the square footage we needed. So, if that, if this property is still available and we could work something out with the town, I think the consensus is that this would be the best place for us to go.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, Roger.
If you had a plot of land and you were going to build your two-story place on it, what's the total footage or acreage would you need?
I would say with parking and that, you're probably at about two acres.
You know, there's a big.
As long as you had two acres of buildable land, that's for your parking, infrastructure and building.
There's a big chunk of land owned by the town next to the American Legion.
Yeah, that's not, I don't believe there's two acres there, though.
Pretty close. It's at least an acre and a half or so, you know. I know you're.
And it's a great point, and what I'm trying to get away from is, we need, as you can see, and the taxpayers, you know, millions of dollars to bring some of these schools up that are 50, 60, 70 years old, Roger. And you take a vacant piece of land, whether you buy it for zero.
Yep.
You've got to do your infrastructure and your site work, your paving and your drainage. That is a bulk of your cost, you can figure that is probably about 30% the cost of the building. So, if a building's going to cost you 4.6 million, which is what we had on the ballot almost two years ago, you add 30% to that, it's about a million, million-two for infrastructure, parking, paving, it's here. Yet, we know this parking could fill up, but there is room towards Lafer to add another row of parking, which we had talked with the town manager, DPW, if that could be done at a later point, if it did become more congested for employee parking and keep the front open for our taxpayers and our people registering cars and that. So, we did look at that, that's why we came forward with it before, two years ago, that if we can build the building and have the parking, you know, to get started, if we had to add some, that's it. But the infrastructure's where the big money is and drainage and that, so.
I'd like to add.
Yeah.
But I agree, if it was here, it should be here and that.
And the good thing is, is you've got the superintendent, the police chief, the town manager, the fire chief, all within walking distance of each other if they needed to be there and that. And then you can service four buildings out of six by walking if you had to, so.
I'd like to add to those comments, please.
Yes, Tony.
So, just to be clear, the cheapest alternative for the taxpayer is the site right next to this room, right here. There's no question about it. We have a great example of that with our neighbor to the south. Depending on who you are, it's either Wyndham or Windham. I still can't figure it out.
It goes both ways.
They had, when they were going to build their new high school, they had a site that they were going to buy. The site that it's on now was donated for free. And at the time, the powers that be said, "Free is always better." Ask them today if that's actually what happened. So, they got free land on a mountain of granite that cost them way more than it would have had they paid for the land on the original site that they were looking for. That's true of any other site in Londonderry for the SAU office. So, no matter how you cut it or spray it, or no matter who's going to give you land, the infrastructure alone, it turns out to be a bad value for the taxpayers of Londonderry when you have this sitting here, this empty lot basically sitting here right now. Really, the only difference in what was there to what will be there if it ever gets done in my lifetime is that the proposal is for two stories instead of one. That's really the only difference. So, and it's a little bit shorter this way because it's two stories. So, anyway, I just, I wanted to put a ribbon around that, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, Ian.
The area behind or to, I'm not sure where it is, east of the upper level of the parking, right outside here, between the parking lot and the baseball fields, there's wooded area. Is that available or is it, you know, dedicated to recreation?
It had been looked into, I think, when the Town Hall was built here to expand parking and it was not feasible, and I think, I think it's some of the ownership of the property also.
It's also wet. It's also wet.
Very wet.
Yes, it's wet also.
But I, yes, it was looked into.
It just wasn't feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Board content with the ranking as number two, or would number three be?
Happy with two.
Okay, we'll go with two. There have been no changes in the priorities. And I said I briefly opened this for, you know, members of the public. So, Ray, do you have any input? Need to come to the microphone. I don't know what the rest of the band is that was here with you.
Well, apparently they had to go home, you know, maybe they have family issues, so forth.
Oh, yeah, the evening's yet young, so.
Ray Breisler in Three Gary Drive. Can I speak about the first thing that was on the agenda, which was the Lions Hall?
Yes, you can speak to any item you want, or all of them, Ray.
Well, we only got so much time, but in regards to that, certainly something should be done with the Lions Hall or the William Morrison House, or whatever it's called, anyway, historic building. It'd be kind of a shame to tear it down, probably a lot of people feel that way. But then, we're looking at a cost figure, and if we're going to put something on a warrant article to have people vote on it, we're going to be very careful because if it's too high, nobody's going to vote on it. And if it's too low, what are we going to do? In particular, I want to speak about the drainage. Apparently, it's been brought up, there's a problem with drainage, getting under the building, deteriorating the building further. If that's the case, that should be addressed, and what is the cost of that? And I would have to wonder that perhaps the DPW could maybe assist us in that regard. I understand they've got a lot of things to do, take care of the roads. I understand they've got a lot of things to do, take care of the roads, plow the roads and other things, and they only have so many personnel. However, if we're talking about saving the building, which I think most people do want to save the building, as opposed to tearing it down, then we need to think about what steps we need to take to preserve the building. If there's a problem with drainage, I think that should be looked at, at what the cost should be and whether or not that can be addressed. And particularly, if you're talking about putting something on a warrant article that people are going to vote on, you've got to be careful, careful what that is, because if it's too high, nobody's going to vote on the thing, okay? So, the other thing is, the building has been described as being historic. Some of the beams and structures in the thing are pretty sturdy, I, I heard that. The problem is with the foundation. The foundation is probably rubble stone and patched together, which is a problem. It's dirt underneath the thing. So from a common stance point, I would say we need to get ahold of somebody that is familiar with old buildings, antiquated buildings. And I would think what needs to happen is, the building needs to be supported with steel beams underneath it, it needs to be raised up and a proper cement foundation put in underneath it, okay? Now, we're talking about the floor, okay? The floor needs to be ripped out completely and redone properly with proper beams underneath it. When you've got that torn out, you're down to the dirt, okay? If you need to put foundation in the middle of the building, concrete, steel beams, whatever you need to do to support the building, that needs to happen, okay? Other than that, as far as a plan for the building, what are we going to use the building for? You need to have an idea, what are you going to use it for?
Yep, that's happening, or will be happening, it's in the future, Ray.
Well, who, who was working on that?
Mr. Woley.
Just you and the town manager?
Town council.
Nope.
Other staff now that is now here, yes.
No, no outside people.
So, in regards to the comments of the structure and the engineering and whatnot, that's our consultant. But as far as the useful purpose-ness of it, that's, that's town staff, and with the input of the community.
If I might ask, who's the consultant?
Weston and Sampson, that's who we have.
Okay, but Weston and Sampson did that initial report, correct?
Correct, and that is, that is posted on the town's DPW webpage.
Okay, but that, that did not definitely determine what needed to take place. That was like cost, if we do this, it's going to be this amount.
Ray, address us through the chair.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it, it, to answer your question, Mr. Chair, it had three versions of limited renovations, minimal use of the facility, up to kind of extensive renovations, and then, you know, the nuclear option of rip it down and build a new facility. So those three options are in that comprehensive report that we did.
Correct, but those were just basic figures as to, here's your three options.
Correct.
Not like, this, to put a new foundation is going to be this amount of money, to put a new roof on, which I don't think it needs right now, but nothing in, broken down like that. I'm sorry, I should be addressing the chair.
That's right, Ray.
We've got to follow procedure.
As the, as the conceptuals and the, and the discussions that we have given them with an addition off of the back, that certainly made a lot of things more easier for them to kind of conceptualize and put together. They do not feel the need to raise the, the building as you're describing and putting in a reinforced concrete foundation, they, they don't believe that that is necessary. If they saw some extreme deficient structural integrity of the building, then we would probably be having that discussion, but they do not, they do not anticipate that right now.
Okay, well, as we know, the most important things, the roof of the building
Yeah, and the foundation.
and the foundation.
Couldn't agree more.
From what I've seen, the foundation is a problem. And I would strongly suggest that what needs to take place is we need to get somebody that is totally familiar with old buildings, timber frame, whatever. And we do have an expert as far as foundations and cement here, I think. And certainly, we could use his expertise, but
I think we'll, we'll find what we can locally, because I'm, I know Londonderry is a wealth of talent, so.
Yes, absolutely.
And we've, we've had certain people underneath that building as well.
Twice, for reasons we won't explain.
One of the discussions we had the other night was, why don't we talk with some of our business partners that, that do business in the town of Londonderry? One that came to mind is the contractor that did the drainage on the Town Common. I believe that was Continental Paving. Some good people
Yes.
with some real heavy equipment, some real talent, and if we had a nice discussion with them, perhaps they could help us out in some manner.
Yeah, I think we're deviating a little bit beyond the CIP in a discussion. That's probably a good topic for the town council, Ray, so.
Okay, very well, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak because I think it's very important for the general public to speak. As you noticed, I'm the only one here, okay? A lot, a lot of people left. Unfortunately, the discussion that was brought forward about the Lions Hall was kind of the, early on the agenda, actually I got here a little late, but
So Ray, because you, you weren't here, I, Tony, so because, because you weren't here, what, what was discussed at the beginning was that the public hearing is actually at the next meeting.
I understand that.
So there's going to be, there's going to be plenty of time for the general public to weigh in, and certainly your comments, which are very well-founded. It would be nice to hear those again at, at that public hearing. And, you know, we're, we're going to be right at it again.
Absolutely, and, and just a point of interest that I think was brought up earlier, but the chair of the town council was at the meeting last night, and I believe he had a conversation with John Farrell
Yes.
with, I'm sorry, all right, right.
That's all right, Ray, we, we understand.
Oh, okay, so, and, and the discussion was that he would strongly suggest that public comment was allowed, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak. It's unfortunate that everybody else had to leave. It's very important that we allow the general public to have input. So with that said, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay.
And thank you for what you do. I do appreciate what you do. You're putting in your time and not even getting paid for it.
That's right.
Thank you for being a
We don't even have a retirement plan, you know?
And
Thank you, Ray.
Have a great evening.
Take care, Ray. We'll see you in several weeks, I'm sure.
And Mr. Chair, to Ray's point, the public comment, or, you know, the, the public hearing is October 4th at 7:00 PM, Town Chambers, just to kind of
Yep, right, right here.
Drive that
Public hearing on the CIP is October 4th, 2023, 7:00 PM in Town Hall.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, I just want to ask any other business? I don't see any motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay, Tony, did the motion adjourn, Jake did the second. So all those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.